The meeting is open and the livestream has started.
Thank you. Good evening, Azusa Community students, parents and staff. Welcome to our regular board meeting of education. I would like to call the meeting to order on Tuesday, February 13th, two thousand twenty-four at five thirty P M. We are now moving on to one point two roll call. Board member Arianez, present. Board member Greer?
Here.
Board member Bo?
Here.
And I am present and what member Benavides will not be with us today. Now we're moving on to item one point three approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve two point one.
Motion by board member Arianez, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Greer, any discussion? Seeing none, place your votes please. We can, we can take a hand vote, board member Bo?
Yes.
Board member Arianez?
Yes.
Board member Greer?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm a yes. Um, for yes. And now we'll be moving to item two point one public comment on closed session items. Hope do we have any blue cards? Lica, do we have anyone, any hands risen in the Zoom?
We have no hands raised on Zoom.
So we will now close and move to closed session and we'll resume at seven P M.
Mr. Martha is joined tonight by his three children Tatiana and Azusa graduate, Viviana who attends Gladstone Middle School and Matthew who is a fifth grade at Paramount. His wife Michelle of twenty-five years cannot be here tonight, but I'm sure she will watch the replay on YouTube. Tonight I have the honor of sharing with you the things Mr. Martha does that makes him a special part of our Paramount community. Mr. Martha is always willing to help with student activities and P T A events. He will donate items to support our celebration of student achievement. When it comes to our annual spring carnival, Mr. Martha will be the first one there to help us set up and the last one to leave to make sure everything is taken down and our campus is ready for the next school day. Mr. Martha is also very thoughtful and appreciative towards our Paramount staff. Out of the blue, Mr. Martha will come in and bring treats for our staff just to say thank you. And my office staff really thanks you. On top of all that, Mr. Martha is committed to the education of his children and attends parent meetings and workshops. He also loves spending time with his children, especially driving R C cars with his son Matthew. And just like on his poster, you can also find Mr. Martha on Thursdays playing basketball at Memorial Park. These are just a few examples of the type of person Mr. Martha is. Very generous, committed, dedicated and thoughtful individual that we are lucky to have as part of our Paramount community. On behalf of all our staff and students at Paramount, we would like to thank you, Mr. Martha, for everything you do and it is my honor once again to introduce you as Paramount Elementary's two thousand twenty-four Parent of the Year. Thank you.
Buenas noches, Presidenta de la Mesa Directiva Rodriguez Peña, miembros de la Mesa Directiva de Educación, gabinete y asistentes. Mi nombre es Horacio Trejo y es un gran orgullo servir como director de Bali del. Esta noche tengo el honor de presentar a nuestra estimada nominada, a Padre del año Rosalba Ramírez. Rosalba ejemplifica el corazón y el espíritu de nuestra comunidad conocida cariñosamente como Miss Rossi. Se ha ganado el cariño y respeto no solo de nuestros estudiantes sino también de nuestros padres. Esto es, se debe a que ella es un modelo de bondad, una fuente de consuelo tanto para los estudiantes como para los padres. El año pasado ella fue la cara de bienvenida para nuestros vikingos saludando a los padres y abriendo las puertas de los autos cuando los niños llegaban para pasar el día. Este año debido a la reorganización se modificó su ubicación. El impacto de su ausencia se sintió de inmediato y numerosos padres expresaron cuanto extrañaban su presencia. Reconociendo, reconociendo su capacidad única para aportar alegría y calma para la rutina de la mañana, hicimos ajustes para que volviera a desempeñar ese mismo papel. Lo que resultó en vikingos felices y incluso alivió la congestión del tráfico en nuestro estacionamiento principal porque la pusimos en la entrada de al sur y la gente está haciendo todo lo posible para moverse para verla allá hacia el sur. La influencia de la señora Rossi se extiende más allá de sus deberes del trabajo. Ella es un líder activa en nuestras clases de I S L, una voz respetada en el Consejo Asesor de Escuelas Comunitarias y membro de nuestro I L A C. A pesar de vivir en San Bernardino viaja diariamente a Azusa impulsada por su compromiso con la visión y misión de nuestra escuela. A menudo afirma que nuestra encuentra inspiración en nuestra escuela, pero debo decir que somos nosotros quienes nos inspiramos en ella. Ella contribuye incansablemente en los salones y en eventos escolares. Rosalba es más que un miembro de nuestra comunidad, ella es un regalo para la ciudad de Azusa que encarna el espíritu de servicio y bondad al que todos aspiramos. Muchas gracias señora Rossi y estamos entusiasmados por ver hacia dónde la llevará su viaje de crecimiento personal. Gracias.
Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board members, cabinet and attendees. My name is Sam Perdomo and I am the proud principal of Gladstone Middle School. It gives me great pleasure to present Caesar Camacho as Gladstone Middle School's very first Parent of the Year. All right, as, as you may or may not notice, Mr. Camacho could not be with us, be here tonight with us because he is ill and so we wish him a speedy recovery. However, we must go on. Whatever activity event that is occurring at G M S, you will be certain to find Mr. Camacho at one of those functions. Mr. Camacho participates and attends all coffee, principal and school side council meetings. During all the meetings, Mr. Camacho always gives constructive input and is an advocate for the school and its programs. For instance, during the school side council meeting, we were developing a drop off and pickup map for the G M S safety plan and Mr. Camacho felt it would be a great idea to make an aerial view of the map. We thought it was a good idea and Mr. Camacho volunteered to make it with routes. A couple of days later, I had it on my desk with an apology for being late, thought, are you kidding me? I didn't expect it for a few weeks. In addition, Mr. Camacho was instrumental in making certain our staff lounge was decorated and set up for our staff Christmas decoration, uh, Christmas celebration, sorry. Moreover, with respect to Mr. Camacho being involved in his daughter Sylvia's education, Mr. Camacho makes certain that his, that Sylvia is in school every day and doing well academically. This is truly evident as his daughter Sylvia, who is an eighth grader at G M S, has a high G P A. In addition, Mr. Camacho believes that good parenting involves earning self-respect for themselves and others. Finally, Mr. Camacho notes that being involved in Sylvia's education and school meeting activities not only assists her but also builds a community for other students to enjoy. Fun fact, everybody knows I always give a fun fact. I knew I had a connection with Mr. Camacho because our same drink of choice is Diet Dr. Pepper, so. G M S is so lucky to have Caesar Camacho as a contributor parent and we are lucky to have him at G M S. Congratulations, Mr. Camacho.
Buenas noches, Presidente de la Mesa Directiva, señora Rodriguez Peña, miembros de la Mesa Directiva de Educación, gabinete y asistentes. Mi nombre es señor Francisco, director de Azusa High School. Es un honor para nosotros reconocer a señora Álvaro como la madre del año en Azusa High School para dos mil veinte tres, veinte cuatro. Con nosotros esta noche tenemos equipo de poder, señora Clark, señora Paracamote, señora Cortés, su hijo Gerardo, también Los Razos, su esposo y su hija están en su iglesia esta noche. La señora Álvaro ha estado involucrado en la escuela secundaria Azusa durante muchos años, en los talleres de educación para padres, para padres y como en la banda de música de Azusa High School. Ella es una voz, una voz fuerte a favor de la participación de los padres y busca oportunidades para que todas las familias participen en Azusa High School. Más allá de dedicar su tiempo a la escuela, lo dedica a la comunidad con Azusa Beautiful y en su iglesia. Ella es un excelente ejemplo para sus hijos y su amor brilla a través de ellos. Alicia Álvaro es una dedicada seguidora de la banda de música Azusa. Durante los últimos tres años, años ha estado presente en todos los eventos musicales apoyando al señor Miquena con logística y ricordación de fondos. Ella se asegura de que los estudiantes de la banda de música están bien atendidos durante la temporada de competencias y dedica innumerables horas de su tiempo los fines de semana a hacer lo que sea necesario para los músicos. Más allá de su apoyo al programa de banda, la señora Álvaro participa regularmente en talleres y reuniones para padres. Su presencia tranquila en las reuniones aporta una energía positiva a la comunidad que es vital a medida que construimos una asociación sólida con y entre todos los padres de la escuela secundaria Azusa. Solidero con los padres es muy apreciado y con sus hijos de noveno grado y de la escuela secundaria Azusa, la presencia de la señora Álvaro se siente en los años vendedores. Gerardo y Samantha tienen una suerte de tener una mamá con señora Álvaro. La escuela secundaria Azusa está orgullosa de nuestra madre del año, señora Álvaro.
As you have heard this evening, the caliber and the commitment of the individuals that we recognize tonight is unmatched and we are beyond fortunate to have all of them support the students in Azusa Unified. It is now my pleasure to introduce Azusa Unified's Parent of the Year representing Sierra High School, Ms. Marcia Santos.
Good evening again, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education, Cabinet, our awardees and attendees of the evening. My name is Teresa Peterson, principal of Sierra High School. Our Sierra Parent of the Year once again and District Parent of the Year, Mrs. Marcia Jimenez Santos. Mrs. Santos is joined by her family, her children Mariah, Elijah, Italia, Scarlett Rose, Malachi, her nieces and nephews Emma, Jaden, Damian and Malik and also her sister Jasmine. Mrs. Santos or Marcia, as many of you know her, is no stranger to a lot of people around our district and throughout our city. I have heard on multiple occasions, does she have an identical twin or a triplet? Because there's no possible way that one person can be involved in so many things. She's a part of PAC, the District Community Advisory, the District Safety Committee, Sierra School Site Council and so, so, so much more. I could go on and on with the list of things she's involved in and contributes to, but we really don't have all night. And no list could really ever do justice to the unwavering commitment and love that she shows day in and day out, not only for our students at Sierra, but our students in the entire district of Azusa Unified's School District as a whole. Mrs. Santos is a dedicated parent with children at multiple A U S D schools. She's driven to not only contribute and ensure that her children are in the best and most supportive school environments that allow them to shine as individuals, but that all our Azusa students have the same access and opportunities. Her enthusiasm for equity in education and her genuine concern for the well-being of students has made a lasting impact. Mrs. Santos consistently goes above and beyond to advocate and shift stereotypes so our students can be proud of the school and district that they attend, all while helping to ensure that all students feel valued and supported in their educational journey. It is with great honor and enthusiasm that I get to stand next to one of the greatest advocates for our student. As a result, she's not only selected as our Sierra Parent of the Year, but also the Azusa Unified School District Parent of the Year. Congratulations, Mrs. Marcia Jimenez Santos.
Good evening, Board Member President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education members and cabinet and attendees. So when I was told that I had to do a speech or an acceptance speech, I didn't know what to write. I, I'm not one good to speak about myself. I believe that what I do is what all you parents that are here today, what we do, not just for our children, but for the children of the community. Um, I believe that if we want to make a difference, we have to make ourselves present in our child's life and not just our children because there's children that don't have that opportunity for X amount of reasons. But if we want to make the change, we have to be the ones to be there for them because our children will succeed because we're there pushing them along the way. And many of you have played that role in my children's life and in other children's life. So as was mentioned, I don't just for the kids in Azusa Unified School District, but for the kids in the community. I believe that the change that we want for tomorrow, we need to work on it for today and we use whatever education we have to build and uplift everybody else. And I do what I do because I have that passion for that love for all the children and all the people in our community, not just my children. Um, I know that sometimes we talk about what stigma, the, oh, what is the district doing to do changes? And you don't understand all the work that they put in until you are part of everything they do. Getting to meet and work with alongside collaboration with our district parents, I get to see that and I am so proud to say that my children come to the Unified School District. Um, last thing is I know that I've been asked, do I have a twin? No, I don't, but one thing that I do have and every single volunteer that does this is a volunteer doesn't always have the time, they have the heart. And that's what I believe that we are all here for, that love that we will spread and keep on spreading and will spread it to our children. Thank you everyone.
Do any board members have any comments? Board member Greer?
I just want to say first of all, congratulations to all of the parents who were honored here tonight. A common theme that I hear throughout is just this, this common thread of not only loving and caring and serving on behalf of your own child, but the ways that you're loving and caring and serving on behalf of kids there at your school sites across the district and across the community. And so just want to say congratulations and thank you for everything that you do. Um, and to Marcia in particular, congratulations to you. Um, I know for me, as, as I get the, the different reports and see the, the social media posts online kind of announcing things, I, I see it and I'm, I'm in no way surprised and I look at it and I say, yes, that, that's fitting. And so where you say you don't like to, to talk a whole lot about yourself, let me just, just say, um, thank you so much for, for just the, the impact that you make on our, on our community, for the ways that you have impacted my own family and shown love and care for my own daughter and how I've, I've experienced that, my family has experienced that and so many other families here in our community have as well. And so congratulations and thank you to you.
Board member, board member Bo?
Good evening and congratulations to all of our awardees tonight. Uh, on behalf of all members of the board and the entire district staff, as parents, parent figures, guardians and family members, you are your child's first teacher and that role is irreplaceable. Um, it means early mornings, late nights, a lot of tears sometimes and a lot of laughter and we simply couldn't do it without your day in and day out partnership. So I want to congratulate and thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you so much.
Board member Arianez?
Escuché que muchos de los padres, perdón, de los administradores que ahora estuvieron hablando fueron en español, so voy a hablar en español. Las personas que están aquí recibiendo los certificados que son los padres, the parents that are here receiving these certificates today are not just certificates, right? It's not just recognition, it's the way that you live. Es como ustedes viven. Que ustedes pueden dar tanto amor, you guys can give so much love, right? Not only to your children, no, no más a sus hijos, pero a los hijos de uno. Porque yo soy padre en este, en este, en este distrito. Ya tengo dos hijos que han pasado por aquí y tengo dos más. Afortunadamente no puedo dar el tiempo ya como daba antes, pero me da mucha alegría. It brings, brings joy to my heart to see so many of you guys give your heart and soul for this district because this district's special and it's special because of you. So just remember that and I'm super happy to join you guys today and joining all of us and congratulating you y dándole el aplauso a todos ustedes porque sin ustedes, padres, nosotros no tenemos distrito. Without you parents, guess what? We don't have a district. So thank you. Thank you for being here and bringing your children here and more importantly, thank you, thank you for pouring your heart, su corazón, su amor, all your love to the district here in the city of Azusa. Congratulations again. Felicidades.
And, and I would like to congratulate all the parents that received the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Parent of the Year Award. I'm so proud to see three daddies up there, our fathers, I should say, right? Right on. Great. And, um, I want to thank you all for volunteering your time in your child's school sites and also join the committees because believe it or not, your input is very important to us on our decision-making. And I'm so happy that you're always and from what I'm hearing in all the committees and the P T A and I know, um, also, um, Miss Santos, she's not only in the school district, she's also like at the baseball field and Little League and you see her everywhere. Um, um, and also I want, I want to congratulate Miss Santos, well deserved. What I read about you and heard about you is very true, very committed, passionate, great leader. And, um, I appreciate you coming to our school sites, but more than anything, every time you see her, she has that same smile on her face all the time, no matter where she's at because that shows you that she is happy doing what she does. Thank you. I would like to, um, I want to thank the community for taking the time to come out and celebrating our amazing Parent of the Year. Congratulations to all the honorees. We are so thankful for all you and for the students at your school sites. At this time, we will take a short recess to take a group photo to allow, to allow those in attendance the opportunity to leave before we resume our board meeting. Can all the board members please join us in the center so we can take a photo and the awardees? Can all the board members please join us in the center so we can take a photo and the awardees? We will now resume to our regular board meeting. We are now on item seven point one, public comment on agenda or non-agenda items. Lica, do we have any, uh, do we have anyone on Zoom or Hope, do we have any blue cards? Thank you.
We do. We do have one hand raised on Zoom, Ms. Tavia Lawson.
Okay. Um, she can start now.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education Cabinet and attendees. I'm the Chair of the East San Gabriel Valley Special Education Local Plan Area Community Advisory Committee. Myself, Marina Harper and Leslie Castellanos are the parent representatives serving for Azusa Unified School District and we have three updates. On Saturday, February twenty-fourth, the Sixteenth Annual Transition Conference, Life After High School, which you will need to know, will take place at Coronado High School at nine AM in the city of West Covina and is being hosted by our community agency partner, Parents Place. And then on Tuesday, March twelfth, in person at the East San Gabriel Selpa Office in the city of Covina, the CAC will host its last training of the year on using task analysis and reinforcements to promote positive behaviors. This is in collaboration with Azusa CAC Parents, the Azusa Unified School District Special Education Team and the California Autism Professional Training and Information Network Captain. The importance of task analysis um, will be talked about, how it can be used at school, in the home and in the community. This training is open to families, students, educators and service providers. And then lastly, the Fourth Annual East San Gabriel Valley Selpa Community Advisory Committee Making a Difference nominations are currently open until Saturday, March sixteenth. Uh, please feel free to nominate classroom staff, other support staff, students, parents, guardians and other volunteers who are making a difference in the lives of students with disabilities who are impacting a positive change in our instrumental, in our community. Uh, you can learn more about our activities by visiting our social media pages and our emailing cacselpa@gmail.com. That's C-A-C-S-E-L-P-A at gmail dot com. And then I would just like to take out this time to thank all the parents uh, that were recognized this evening. You're truly making a difference in the lives of Azusa Unified School District as well as the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Larson. Uh, we are moving on now to item eight point one, comments and reports and requests by the Board of Education. Board member Cruz?
I have no comments tonight.
Board member Bo?
No comments this evening.
Board member Arianez?
Good evening, everyone that's watching at home who, and who are still here. I just want to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day. For those of us that celebrate, that don't celebrate, it's always a special day. So Happy Valentine's to my colleagues and the cabinet and our student board member here, President, and our lovely secretary in the back, Ms. Hope. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, I'll take all of your times. So, um, I just want to announce Murray Elementary, Azusa Beautiful Community Garden Cleanup, Phase One. It was great to see parents, students, staffs and the Rotary Azusa High Interact Students. Principal Acosta and retired teacher Alyssa Smith came out on a Saturday morning, working together to clean the garden area so they can be planting vegetables. The garden will, will provide a place for students to be outside and be productive at the same time. The good news is that Murray Elementary has received a five hundred dollar grant from Kids Gardening to continue their project. I went to Azusa High School, uh, with the San Gabriel Valley Consortium. We contribute students to the data, excuse me, the, the digital media arts. We had mock trials with the students and preparing them for the internship, summer school internship. So many students are very well prepared and, um, they're ready to go. Sierra High School, coffee with the principal. Ms. Peterson spoke about the new welding class offered at Pomona Fairplex. Seventeen students have registered so far from Sierra and Azusa High School and I'm happy to say that they're mixed boys and girls. And I'm looking forward to, um, in the future, electrical. And I want to thank, um, Frank Chang, Director of College and Career Pathways, Richard Hernandez. From exec- she's the Executive Director of San Gabriel ROP for making it possible. Glaston Middle School, the annual faculty art showcase, it was fabulous. Now we know our students are great artists. Mo- most of our students usually come in first or second place when they do the Grace N' Paletano Award. Because our teachers, they had a fab- they did a fabulous job. They had ceramics, they had portraits that they did on their own and they showcased them. I went to Azusa High School Expo, full house, tables were full. It was great to see all the academics, clubs, sports and organization offered at Azusa High School. I always enjoy hearing the students at their booths and when they're so, um, proud to talk about what, what they're doing in their class time. And, um, I did have a parent saying, wow, this is great, you know? That, you know, all these programs that are together and that was the whole idea when we merged the high schools together to have more programs and the kids were very excited. Um, the ad hoc committee that I belong to between the city of Azusa and Azusa Unified School District, our discussion this time was regarding our surplus properties, National Little League Field, Charter School, Sierra High School, SROs and Rockville signage. CSCA Area G Office Installation Brunch. Congratulations to CSCA President Patricia Sanchez and Diana Choa and Yvette Valdez. Thank you. Now we're moving on to item, um, nine point one, comments and reports by student board members, superintendent and cabinet.
Good evening, board members, superintendent Ortega and cabinet. As always, it's a pleasure to be here representing Sierra High School. I wanted to start by sharing how extremely proud I am that my mom, Maricia Santos, was chosen as Sierra and District's Parent of the Year. I know how much you do for me, my siblings and our family, but I know that you have also committed and contributed to being a part of positive change, not only for Sierra, but several other schools and the Azusa Unified School District as a whole. Thank you so much for all that you do and I'm so happy and proud to see you be recognized and be able to be here with you tonight. Since the last meeting, we concluded our undefeated soccer season and we also started our softball season with the great sixteen to five win against San Antonio High School in Claremont. On January thirty-first, we had a great turnout for our Sierra Fasfa Workshop in partnership with Citrus College. During this workshop, parents and students were given the opportunity to apply with direct instructions and support from our citrus partners and our very own counselor and principal. Last week, on Tuesday, February sixth, Citrus College came out again during lunch to help our Sierra seniors apply to Citrus and the Promise Program. The Citrus Promise Program and Promise Grant allows students to receive up to two years for free tuition, vouchers for books and priority registration. For our recent Spirit Week, Spirit Day activities, we had blackout day where students came to school in all black and this Friday, we will have Doo Day where students will come dressed as their favorite iconic duo like Mickey and Minnie or SpongeBob and Patrick. We also had our second Red Cross Blood Donation Event last week. This event not only allowed Sierra students and staff to make a positive impact and potentially save lives, but it, it was just also an opportunity for additional scholarship money for soon-to-be graduates just like me. As we quickly approach the end of the school year, we are kicking our focus on the future into high gears with scholarship season right ahead of us, more visitation, visits from post-secondary programs and field trips. I look forward to all that is to come here at Sierra. Thank you and go Spartan.
Thank you very much. Moving on to, uh, the report from Azusa High School, Emery Hernandez.
Good evening, board members and attendees. First of all, Azusa High School would like to announce that they are proud of both boys and girls soccer teams which, because they have been successful in their first week of CIF competition. The boys varsity team defeated Oahu Valley and Oakwood High School in the wild card round and defeated the Thatcher School two to zero in round one action on February ninth. The girls varsity team defeated Cavalry Chapel and played against Artesia on Saturday night. Azusa High School is also proud of the student union who taught the LA County Museum of Natural History staff the community circle technique we implemented in school and did a tour of the museum on February ninth, twenty twenty-four. Azusa students will influence museum staff and the educational programs they offer students around the country. Azusa High School is proud of its students, Emmanuel Serrato, John Takuchi, Emily Ruiz and Hector Hernandez who participated in the four-way speech contest sponsored by Azusa Rotary on January thirty-first. The students gave impassioned speeches that challenged the audience to consider the good life. Way to go Aztecs. Azusa High School would like to congratulate Alicia Alvaron for her nomination as Azusa High School's Parent of the Year. We are proud of her leadership and commitment and the parent community that she belongs to. Azusa High School is also hosting our second round of eighth grade tours on February fifteenth and at the same time is hosting parents to tour the campus as well on February fifteenth and February twenty-ninth. Both eighth grade and AHS parents are welcome to join the tour starting at eight-thirty on the east campus. Azusa High School ASB is hosting the State East Dance to Infinity and Beyond on February twenty-third at seven PM. Get ready Aztecs to get dancing. Also, Azusa High School ASB is hosting a blood drive on March eighth in the gym. Community members are welcome to donate blood and help Azusa High School students save lives. And lastly, AHS seniors and their families would like to do their, who would like to do their cap and gown order on the weekend can place an order beginning on February seventeenth from ten AM to ten PM by the main office on west campus. Thank you.
Superintendent Ortega?
Thank you, Board President. Uh, first I'd like to thank Board President Rodriguez Peña for taking all of my comments for tonight. Um, congratulations to all the Parents of the Year, uh, tonight. Uh, to echo the sentiment from the board, uh, we truly value, uh, the voice of our parents. And what makes me extremely proud as a superintendent is that we don't only say that, but we can point to things, specific things that we can say because of a parent, this. And so that, um, that should make us all proud, uh, that it's not just about hearing and listening, but doing. Um, I'd also like to thank, uh, the Azusa Leaders for Learning Foundation. Uh, they recently approved a three thousand dollar donation to provide, uh, ten CTE students uh, with an internship, uh, a, a stipend. And so that's gonna, that's gonna be very welcomed, uh, by our students. Uh, and it's just a good way to, uh, show a token of appreciation for the work that they're doing as interns. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, CSCA and AEA, uh, for their recent invitations. Uh, for CSCA, I was invited to attend the Area G Officer Installation Event on Saturday, January twenty-seventh in, uh, Whittier. And for AEA, I was invited to attend the CTA Service Center One Superintendent's Luncheon on Wednesday, February seventh. And so just want to thank, uh, both labor partners, uh, for their continued partnership, uh, with the district. And then lastly, I just want to thank also the city for their partnership. Uh, we had our ad hoc meeting as was stated by the Board President on January thirty-first and it was good to have a good, robust conversation, uh, about the district and about the city. Thank you.
I too would like to again congratulate all of our Parents of the Year um, and also highlight the Azusa High School Expo. Um, it's wonderful to see all of the options that are afforded to our students um, for them to seek and participate in all of the things that are of interest to them. I too would like to congratulate our Azusa High School Student Union. Um, they provided a training, uh, to the staff at the Natural History Museum on community circles.
Good evening to all. I would like to start with congratulating all the Parent of the Years and for their hard work and their efforts and their continued dedication to our school district and to our families. Um, also share that we had an exciting weekend. Um, if you were at by our, around the Valleydale Elementary School, you saw the helicopter. We had our third helicopter dropped in our district, um, helicopter H back drop in our district. So I know our community were excited and some of our students, we received pictures of everyone watching and everything, so that was nice. Um, also want to announce that we, um, formally, um, issued the RFP for our paramount modernization. Would that mean that the DSA has finally approved our plans? And so now we have issued the RFP for contractors to submit their bids for the actual project. And then lastly, I just want to take a moment to apologize to all of our students and our staff on our thermostat, um, installation. We did drop the ball. Um, and so we are trying to right our wrong. We are, um, we have already issued a video, um, a how-to video to all of our staff. Um, we have our contractors out there working, um, but we went too fast. So we're going to slow down, make sure everyone's trained and make sure we have the proper resources to make sure they're working.
And I also want to follow in the chorus of congratulations to our parents who received an award and, um, also to recognize that this, uh, awards ceremony-
and also to recognize that this awards ceremony is truly special. I really enjoy being able to hear all the wonderful reports that our parents, our administrators gave about our parents. I also attended the CTA luncheon with our superintendent and cabinet. It was nice to see our AEA President Meg Savella, who also serves in a leadership capacity for CTA, working that CTE luncheon and see her in action. So I want to thank Meg for her invitation. And then lastly, I also want to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. It's our people, like our students, our employees and families that we have here in the Azusa Unified School District that makes us love what we do. So thank you all.
Thank you. Now we're moving to item ten point one, approval of the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by Board of Education to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no discussion of these items unless requested by Board of Education member. If a Board of Education member requests discussion, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item ten point five, approval of the twenty twenty three SARC.
Motion by Board Member Bo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Arianez. Student, word preference?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a hand vote. Board Member Bo?
Yes.
Board Member Arianez?
Yes.
Board Member Greer?
Yes.
And a yes for me, so four zero. Now we, the item that was pulled. Eleven point one becomes eleven point one. And do we have a discussion? Board Member Bo?
Well, I'd like to make a, may I make a motion to approve the item?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the item, the twenty twenty three SARC.
Second the motion.
Vote by Board Member Bo. Second by Board Member Arianez. Any discussion?
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, can you provide the board with clarification around the approval of the annual SARC?
Yes, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Comacho to explain that to us.
The SARC template and data that gets inputted into the SARC, the timing of that occurred on January ninth in that week and was delayed by the date of our next board meeting, which occurred on that same night. So we had to bring it to this meeting.
Just so that we're all on the same page, the, my understanding is the SARC is due annually on or before February first. So that means we have, we should have board approval before the first?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that as, as board members, we all were on the same page with compliance. I know that our cabinet is doing everything possible to ensure compliance, but sometimes data is out of our control.
So that, that's the only reason. Thank you for that, Board Member Bo, for pointing that out. So we have a first and a second and a discussion. Can we place our vote? On item eleven point one. Motion passes four zero. Now we're moving on to item, moving on to general functions, item twelve point one, approval of the agreement for phase two workage service with DCG Strategies. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve, twelve point one.
Motion by Board Member Arianez. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Greer. Student, Board Member Bo?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is CDG here tonight?
Yes.
Yes, they are here too.
Yeah, okay, they're here. So any, well, any discussion? Any discussion?
I would like to meet them if they're here tonight.
They are actually going to present on twelve point two.
They will, they will, okay. So, so we have a first, a second. That was the discussion. Can we place our vote? Please?
So I don't know if to wait to ask questions or while they're up here or just?
Well, when they, when they come, we can ask. Motion passes four zero. Now we're moving on to item twelve point two, presentation of surplus property timeline. Mr. Tega, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President. Tonight, we are here to present a timeline to the Board of Education regarding our surplus property. If the board may recall, when we began the surplus phase three of school reorganization, we were working with Sarah Polito, but Sarah is at home, happy with the baby girl. And so she is on maternity leave right now. And so we have had the pleasure of working with Jessica Erlich and Sabrina Buendia, who have been filling in for Sarah as she's on maternity leave. So tonight, we were going to be grace with Jessica Erlich and Sabrina Buendia. But I spoke to Jessica Erlich yesterday and she has come down not only with COVID, but with pretty bad COVID. And so Sabrina will be riding solo tonight along with our DCG partners. So Sabrina, I'll turn it over to you. I, I can put the timeline on the screen if, to make that easy for everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much to the board and Arturo and Latasha for having us here today. Like Arturo said, my name is Sabrina Buendia and I'm from Bacon Friedman in Full Frost and we act as the district's legal counsel. So today, we wanted to present our surplus property timeline, just to give the board and the district and everyone online an idea of what to expect going forward with the potential sale of these surplus properties. And so as you can see on the screen in front and the screen right here, the timeline is intended to be a resource and a cheat sheet for the district board as well as Arturo and Latasha going forward. But we wanted to emphasize that this timeline is a working document and as specifics become, they will continue to be updated as specifics for each property progress going forward. So you'll notice that the timeline is actually broken up into two parts. The first part and the reasoning behind that is that the district is required, under the surplus property statutes, to undergo various processes. So we thought it was important to have each process broken down along with the corresponding dates for each process. But when developing this timeline, we looked at each process through a lens of keeping our foot on the gas, but also doing right by each particular process and the deadlines that the district is obligated to meet for each process. So as you'll see on page one and two, this will represent the by-process breakdown of each property, or I'm sorry, by of each process, but you will see that in the second part of the timeline, it is organized chronologically with emphasis that multiple of these processes can occur simultaneously. So if we go back to the first portion of the timeline, this concerns the required notice period. So the statutes regarding the surplus property process requires the district to offer each property to specific entities and those entities will be described in statute. The district will provide notice and these entities will have about sixty days to respond to the district's notice. And in addition, the district will publish these properties for sale in a local newspaper or publication. And so we understand that the district uses the Tribune. And so the district will publish that these properties are available for purchase within the Tribune three successive weeks in a row. So as you can see, we have a proposed set of dates for the district to publish these properties in the Tribune. And for those entities that are listed in the publication, the, those entities will have about sixty days from the last publication date. So the last date would be that March sixth date to make an offer on the property. So that would be that May fifth date. That would be the last day that they can make an offer. And if they do not make an offer, we will target the May seventh, twenty twenty four board date to adopt a resolution of intent to sell the properties. And so simultaneous to the notice period, oh, actually, I just wanted to note that the notices, we often find that these are courtesy. So more often than not, those entities will not make an offer on the property. But in the event that they do, this is a working document and of course, we'll update for each specific property as the process progresses. So now going to the waiver process, simultaneous to the notice period, we understand that the district has opted to apply for a waiver with the State Board of Education, which is really great. It allows the district to have increased flexibility in the statutory surplus property process. And so in order for the district to apply for a waiver, we will have to do a few things. We'll have to do a public hearing as well as send notices to the seven eleven committee members that we had asked prior to declare the properties a surplus as well as the district's collective bargaining groups for input regarding submission of the waiver. And so all of these dates in developing the waiver process timeline, we're working backwards from the specific State Board of Education meeting that we've selected.
Excuse me, Sabrina?
Oh, yes.
Can my colleagues ask questions in between as they're speaking?
Oh, um, I, okay, yes.
Okay, Board Member Bo.
The other Sabrina.
Serena, Bo, her name is Serena.
Ms. Buendia, can you, this is a lot of information. Can you just clarify what the waiver allows us to do?
Yes, so the waiver allows the district to forego certain portions of the statutory surplus property process within the education code. What the district will waive is dependent on what we decide to waive, but it is typically the waiver of the public auction process where typically the district will have to take the highest bidder. All of the potential buyers of the properties will submit bids and then those bids will be opened by the board and the board will have to take the highest bidder. But sometimes we apply for a waiver for the, those particular provisions to be waived so that the district can engage instead in an RFP process, which is definitely something that DCG has assisted us heavily with in developing the dates for this timeline. But instead of being mandated to take the highest bidder, the district is instead able to consider a large variety of factors with one of them being purchase price. But it really allows for increased flexibility and is very beneficial for the district to have a waiver.
And as a follow-up question, are there other provisions that we would also waive in that waiver process?
Yes, and we do have samples of those as well, if you would like to see those. But I could definitely provide those to Arturo and Latasha for forwarding over. It, it's an online process and so each specific field will be entered in on the State Board of Education portal and then all the provisions to be waived will be bracketed out. So it's kind of helpful to see like which specific provisions will be crossed out. And so I can definitely provide what we typically put in those waiver applications to see which provisions are being waived.
Thank you. That context would be helpful.
I was gonna ask a question regarding the waiver also. So the waiver, what I'm reading here is two-year period, but I believe the last meeting, they discussed waiver if the property is not being sold for five years? Is that different than, than what we're talking about here?
Yes, that would be for unused site fees. And so the.
For what? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. It would be for unused site fees?
Oh, oh.
Yes, so two different processes. The waiver will be for, granted for a period of two years following approval for the statutory surplus property process.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Sabrina. Continue.
So working backwards from that July date, the SBE requires that the district submit the waiver, giving them approximately ten to twelve weeks to review that application. And so working backwards from the July date, they will require that the waiver be submitted by April nine, twenty twenty four. And so prior to that, the district must hold a public hearing as well as adopt a resolution authorizing that the district approves of submitting the waiver for each property. And so prior to that March twelfth date, the district will have to reach out to their seven eleven committee members as well as their collective bargaining groups, as well as notice that public hearing for that March twelfth board deadline. Okay, and so the waiver, we will pretty much know if the waiver is approved on that July eleventh date. So the meeting is the July tenth through July eleven and we'll pretty much know whether or not the waivers are approved on July eleven, at which point the district will have waived certain provisions of the surplus property process for a period of two years. And so going towards the RFP process, this is running simultaneous to both the notice process as well as the waiver process. The caveat is that the district cannot accept offers until the waiver is approved. But here, DCG has been very instrumental in providing us with the dates associated with the RFP process and with their expertise on how best to maximize the district's opportunities in this regard. So I would like to turn that over to Lauren to describe the DCG RFP process and take it from there.
Good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure to be here. Again, my name is Lauren Jennings with DCG Strategies. I'm also joined in the back by Landis Grayden. Landis is our CEO and broker of record. And so as we're transitioning into potentially brokerage services, you'll see his face back there more and more often as we get deeper into the process. So as you heard from Sabrina, the process is really broken down into three different buckets. You have the notice period, the waiver period, and then assuming your waiver is approved and assuming none of the public agencies that you require to notify, submit an intent to purchase the property, then you can then release the properties to the, what we call the general public for sale. And so the first two brackets that Sabrina just went through are all dictated by education code. So it's a lot of checkmarks that you have to go through, a lot of requirements, but again, that's all dictated by education code. And that was what Sabrina was mentioning in terms of we want to, potentially, the State Board of Education will allow you to waive some of those requirements, which is really potentially to your benefit and just gives you that greater flexibility. So once again, assuming we submit the notices and you do not receive any responses to those notices. and you do not receive any responses to those notices, assuming you also do receive approval from the State Board of Education with that waiver, then like I said, the next step would be to release what's called a RFP, which stands for Request for Proposal. And that is essentially a document that our team would put together alongside legal counsel and staff. With the property specifics, we would include a deadline for when the district is requiring proposals to be received. And what we've done before in the past is that we can release the RFP prior to receiving State Board of Education approval. However, the caveat is, is that you need the State Board of Education approval in order to accept the RFPs. So in our timeline, we typically will time it where potentially the RFP proposal responses are due the week after the assumed State Board of Education approval. I've been doing this for many, many years. And the trend in most recent years, I'd say over the past five to ten years, is that we've never had a district be denied a waiver from the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education has been trending where they're approving the waivers. However, there's always certain caveats. And so they'll say, approved with these conditions. And likely, the conditions are, you know, not anything major, but just certain steps, again, that the district has to take to make sure that you abide by those waiver provisions. And so when we release the RFP, we will receive proposals. Typically, the proposals will come to our team as your broker representative. We will receive and review each of those proposals. And a part of our job is not only to receive them, but also to make sure that we're reviewing them and providing you as the board, and potentially, if you were to establish a committee who could review those, provide them with data so that you can compare the proposals to each other. We also typically recommend, again, assuming a waiver process, is prior to determining which proposal you're going to receive or accept, holding an interview process. We have found many, many times with working with school districts and, you know, selling surplus property, that a lot of times, I mean, everybody knows, a lot of times you can write certain things in your proposal, but then it's always good just to interview, just to make sure that the values and the values of your proposer, a potential buyer, align with the district values. So that's something that we have built into the process as well. And so everything throughout this timeline in terms of the RFP process would be run by our team, the brokerage team. We will, of course, work hand in hand with legal counsel, but this is really where we get into the real estate piece of it. And so this timeline, again, really runs through accepting proposals, going through the interviews, making, bringing potentially the proposals back to the board for board consideration. And then the board, if you so choose, selecting a proposer and a proposal to accept and enter into negotiations with. And so as we move further down this process, further down the timeline, excuse me, this is sort of the next steps. All of these, and I have to say this, all of these dates are hypothetical. We did our best based off of past experience to put a timeline together. However, this will vary as we get deeper into the process. And so the next few steps really go through what happens after you accept a proposal, should you accept a proposal, because it's still up to you as a board, whether you want to accept and enter into negotiations. So the next step would be, you know, once you select a buyer, then you would negotiate a purchase and sale agreement. And when I say you, our team, should you, should you go to that step, we would negotiate on your behalf, obviously, in conjunction with staff. And we would prepare a purchase and sale agreement that would be brought to the board for review and final approval. And then, once you have a mutually executed purchase and sale agreement, that's the time where you would officially agree to terms, you would officially agree to timeline, you would officially agree to all those, all those specific details that are really important. So we would negotiate that on behalf, or excuse me, in conjunction with legal counsel. And then we would officially open escrow. And so escrow would be the time where the buyer would complete all the due diligence. And then the end goal would be close of escrow, which is when the sale is completed, the title officially transfers from the district to the new buyer, and the district receives the deposit of funds. So that is a high-level overview of that process. Depending on the proposals and depending on the buyer, that brokerage period could take anywhere from, I mean, if we're lucky, eighteen months. And a normal timeline would be closer to twenty-four to thirty-six months. The reason being, and this is subject fully to negotiation, but typically, you know, if you have a developer, so to speak, who is looking to purchase property, a lot of times, they need time to go through the due diligence process with whatever their governing jurisdiction is, and to receive what's called entitlements. Entitlements are basically permits and allowances from the jurisdiction for them to build what they are intending to build. So that process ranges, depending on the jurisdiction and depending on their timeline, it ranges from roughly eighteen months to thirty-six months. And so this, again, is just very high level. Any questions about that brokerage RFP process?
Board member Greer?
Well, I have a handful of questions, but I'll wait till I went through the end.
The board, I'd like to thank Sabrina Bundia and Lauren Jennings for being here tonight. As Sabrina said, we wanted to give you two views of this. View number one was by, by process. And then view number two, as you can see, was by chronological order. But they're open to questions.
Yes, we're going to agree.
So I'll try to ask these questions quickly, and please feel free to just, some of these are clarifying questions. So answer them as quickly as I even asked. So for example, Lauren, you'd already shared that these dates here are tentative and projected. Does that mean that these dates could also be expedited? Or are you giving that caution as to communicate that this is best-case scenario?
I think that this would be a best-case scenario. I think the dates that run simultaneously would be the notice period, the waiver process, and the RFP process, all of which we've expedited as much as we think we can at this point. But the dates that are tentative would follow once we reach that RFP process, once we've received the RFPs, evaluated them, and then have selected a buyer.
Okay, another question. We talked about needing to make the properties available to certain entities first. And then I believe one of you said that it's possible that we may, that there may not be any offers. Does that mean that some of the local entities would communicate a no early? So we would not have to wait for that period to end? Or would we still need to wait the, what is it, the sixty days or ninety days that's listed on here? Sixty days?
Yeah, that is actually a very great question. Sometimes they do communicate early, and rather than going through the three publications, sometimes they will communicate to us within the first publication that they no longer would like to, or they would not be interested in the properties, at which point potentially, we could expedite that process. But we still think that targeting the May seventh board meeting would be conservative running alongside the waiver process.
Okay, and then another question that we had, the last time we were discussing this, was feedback regarding the capacity of DCG and F3 for us to be able to move forward with all properties at one time. And so based off of what's being presented, my assumption is that the thinking is that that would be an okay thing and wise thing for us to do?
I think, Lauren, did you want to comment on the rollout of each property?
That was a question that was received at the last board meeting, that I was here at least. And yes, our recommendation is that the market can handle potentially however, four, three, however many properties the board decides to release to the market, just due to the varying jurisdictions.
Okay, and? And I think, I think this is my last question. So we're saying twenty-four to thirty-six months before escrow closes. And so to be clear, that means, that would mean twenty-four to thirty-six months for the properties to still sit vacant during that time. And twenty-four to thirty-six months, I guess eighteen to thirty-six months before the district receives funds and is able to use, leverage those funds for capital projects or whatnot within the district.
So yes and no. So yes, too, the properties would sit vacant because during the entitlement process, the district still owns the property. However, the buyer is going through the process of getting applications. And so typically, you wouldn't allow them to do anything on your site until they officially own it. Regarding the money question, I said yes and no because, yes, you will not receive the full amount of funds until the end. However, the, how much funds you receive throughout the process is subject to negotiation. So for example, what we typically recommend during the negotiation process, and we can, you know, we can negotiate with the district or with the potential buyer on it, is having certain milestones, where certain milestones are met by the buyer, then they can potentially release non-refundable funds that are released to the district immediately. For example, it could be, you know, an amount, maybe it's five hundred thousand dollars, that once they hit this threshold, this is released to the district immediately. It's non-refundable, it's applicable to the purchase price. But that would be cash in hand. That's not all of the money, though. But so that's potentially how we can structure it.
Okay, because then I'll just comment, that was probably the most surprising thing that I read in the report. I don't think that I expected that. The process is what the process is. But I don't think I anticipated that. I know that as we've had a number of properties already that have been sitting vacant, and we've been having conversations about waivers, and I'm thinking, okay, let's get these waivers in place. But we're gonna, if we sell the properties anyway, then it'll be moot. But it appears that we're still looking at the best-case scenario, that this property is still sitting vacant for years to come and all of the inherent challenges that come with that. My hope, my request, is that we would be able to get ahead of this and communicate to our community that this is a hurry-up-and-wait type of situation, so that we're not seeming to, let's just get ahead of expectations where there's just wonderings and questionings around where and why are the properties still sitting there when in truth, we're actively working towards doing something with the properties? But there's an inherent part of the process where we just have to wait.
Can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
So I want to give the caveat, however, that the twenty-four to thirty-six months assumes a few things, right? That assumes that it's potentially a residential buyer. It could not be a residential developer, it could be sold as it. Also, too, so as is, if you remember when we did, when I gave that high-level timeline, it's a lot shorter because you, the buyer potentially would be using the building as is. And so therefore, they don't need to go through that entitlement process, which is the long process. Also, too, the district does have the option to not sell the property, subject to entitlement. You can sell the property even if it is to a developer as is. However, the caveat there is, is that if you want it to maximize value, then it would be in your best interest to allow the buyer time to go through that planning process, because it's essentially risk. You're essentially saying, you know, I'm taking, if you give them the time period, you're saying, I'm taking away your risk. So therefore, go through the planning process and then pay me the maximum value for the property. The other option would be to say, you take all the risk as the buyer, I'm not giving you time to go through the entitlement process. So then that would likely lead to a lower value. So the timeline comes with caveats. You have options to decide if you want to allow that long process.
And that makes sense. And so to be clear, we would potentially be at a, at a part in the process where we have received a proposal, we've accepted a proposal, we've identified a buyer, we've negotiated, everybody's in agreement. And now, in order to maximize, we are now waiting the entitlement process, which could be upwards of thirty-six months.
Correct, yeah.
Lauren? I have a question. I have a question, as what member Greer mentioned, community. So talking to the cabinet and the superintendent, is it possible that we can put out a newsletter to the community on, you know, what the process is or how long it's going to take? Just like we did the school loan process, you know, what do we do, you know, where are we at? And I think it should go to the whole community so they know. And I think it's really important that we do, because it's true, they do want to know why they're still there. And it's, you know, you guys are not doing anything, which we are, but it takes time. But I really think it's really important that the community knows any newsletter and knows the process and that we are working on it. That is my recommendation.
I second that recommendation.
Thank you.
Or president? I wanted to ask Lauren, just to keep the story going, that board member Greer has opened up. So let's, let's call it all the negotiations, and then the thirty-six starts, right? And so let's say in thirty-six months, it's done. Congratulations, we're closed. But that doesn't mean that on day, on month thirty-seven, day one, the school is demolished and then construction happens. What is typically, do you see, once it's in the developer's hand, how long is it still going to sit there empty before they do something? Do you think that, is that a quick process? Or what have you seen in terms of that?
Yeah, another great question. So after title officially transfers away from the district, this is assuming it's a residential development, a developer, then typically, they have, it could be six months to another year before they can actually start construction and go through demolition. Again, this is all based off of the negotiations. But typically, what we recommend is for a district to close escrow upon receipt of what's called a tentative map. That's essentially the point where going through the process with city council, they receive planning commission approval, they receive city council approval for the development, and then they bypass, or not bypass, the appeal period expires. And so they've basically gone through all the administrative work that needs to happen. There is a such thing called a final map, which has, is make, could be six to twelve months after. Typically, developers prefer to close that final map because they basically don't want the holding costs associated. But every, the risk is gone once they receive final map. So that's typically our recommendation. And typically, that's what happens. And so that gap period could be another six to twelve months where nothing's happening at the property. Well, they could be doing underground work, but to the naked eye, nothing's happening on the property.
So I just want to add one thing regarding the proposal, between all this transfers and all this stuff's going on. You know, I'd like to, like, who's responsible at the time to, you know, gate it up? Or, you know, what are the windows or whatever happens? You know, who is responsible at what time?
Great question. So the district is responsible for the property until close of escrow and until title transfer. So during the RFP and the brokerage and the escrow period, you still own the property. You still are the official title owner. And so therefore, you would still be responsible for the property.
Thank you.
So then, just adding another layer to the communication is, I see it as tremendously valuable to, let's celebrate when the, when escrow closes, find a way to communicate the properties have been sold. So as to make it clear that from this moment forward, we're done, and we're moving on to capital projects and whatnot, and whatever happens next is on a developer.
Right, the community needs to know the good, bad, and the ugly in the final, right?
Right.
I think it's very important. Any further questions?
Adrian, thank you for hitting it out of the ballpark here. I think that it was all in our minds, you know, what's going to happen with these properties. One of the things that we as a board had asked was that the properties, you know, not be abandoned for a long time. And so with the communication and, you know, knowing the timeline and the community knowing and understanding this, I am just suggesting and making sure that we upkeep those properties until it's time to let them go.
Thank you, great timeline. Great job.
Thank you, board members. And I just really wanted to emphasize how great everyone has been throughout this process as thought partners. Uh and we really appreciate Arturo and Latasha's guidance throughout this process. And we just acknowledge that this is a very exciting time for the district and we are so happy to help. Um, and we're very excited for the future.
Thank you, Sabrina. So now we're moving on to item twelve point three, resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four dash seventeen. Approval recommendations for surplus property and authorization district staff to proceed with all the necessary process. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by board member Greer, do you have a second? Second by board member Arianez, any discussion? Student preferential vote?
Yes.
Okay. Colleagues, please place your vote. Motion, motion passes for zero. Now we're moving on to item twelve point four, approval and update of the Zuzunified School District Board of Education handbook. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by board member Greer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Arianez, any discussion?
Yes, I have just one request. Uh quick, quickly, if you look at, what is this, page seven, item number ten? I know we talked about this during our governance, um the 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 question around the the order and the timing around motions and seconds. My my request is that we add, similar to what we have in number nine, add a clause that says, um at the at the board president's discretion, um so as to allow for um a a scenario where a sitting board president would prefer that that it move uh quicker, but but also allow for a discretion where a board president would prefer that it that it be slowed down.
Any further discussion? I I I agree with board member Greer. I believe it depends on each each board president usually runs their meeting different, right? And I I don't want to just put it in um in stone that you have to do this and you have to do that. It's really up to the board president when they're sitting here, what they're, um what they prefer. So will we, um, do you agree, colleagues, to have that changed?
Yeah.
Yes.
The majority? Board member William, question? Oh, no, he's agreeing. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Just for clarification.
Yes, sir.
It'll be super simple, at the board president's discretion, comma, and then the rest of that sentence for number ten. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, place your vote, please. Motion passes for zero. And now we're moving on to item thirteen point one, accept uh acceptance of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three district audit report. Ms Jamal, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, board president. Ms. Landa Arikan Sipinya, we have our auditors tonight, um who's online, Ms. Gurima, um who will be presenting the district's audit report for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal school year.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, good evening to everyone. I am Gurima from Herschel and Company. And with me, I have my managing partner, Sanwar Herschel. And we are here to present the audit report. Uh before I start, I would like to thank Latasha, because she made all the effort to finish the audit on time. She was available on the call, on the emails, after office hours. So, I mean, uh she was, she was really helpful to get all the documents on time. And that's the reason we were able to submit the audit. We were able to finish the uh submission to the federal Audit Clearing House on time.
Thank you very much. We're also very happy to have her.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, she was my savior. Anytime I had an issue, I just used to call her, text her, and she was like, you know, super kind to receive my calls. And most of the time, she was also busy in the, you know, meetings, but she used to call me back. So I really, I really appreciate the time she gave me and uh we were able to finish this. So I'll start with my presentation. Audit framework of consist of planning, risk assessment, fieldwork, review, and reporting. This time, we were onsite thrice. Uh we were around March to finish the state compliance, then we we came around October and then November. Auditor's responsibility is to form and express an opinion on the financial statement, major federal award program compliance, state program compliance. We have to exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism throughout the audit. Uh to identify and assess the risk of material misstatement on the financial statement, whether due to fraud-